I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education, Lancaster Board of Education, to order. For those of you in the audience and those of you potentially watching on TV or on the website, this is the one and only meeting where the Superintendent of Schools begins and runs the meeting. And it lasts a couple of minutes until the members of the Board of Education elect their officers and then are administered the oath. So it's sort of like the changing of the guard and the transfer of power. So that's what will be happening in the next couple of minutes, and then I'll turn it over to the President. So at this time, could everyone stand for the pledge of the flag in a moment of individual reflection?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
4.0, administration of oath. 4.1 to the Superintendent. Alrighty, 5.1, nominations for the President of Board of Education for 2018-19 school year and any subsequent motions.
I move, nominate Patrick Uteg for President.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
5.2, Vice President of the Board of Education for 2018-19 school year. Any nominations and subsequent motions, please?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Bill Gallagher for Vice President.
Second.
Any others? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. 5.3, administer the oath to both the President and Vice President.
(inaudible) swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President and President of Education in accordance with my ability.
Nobody came for me tonight, so... Okay. Well, before we move on, I'd like to say thank you to the Board, and I'm sure I speak for Mr. Gallagher. When we say that we are honored and humbled by these positions, and we'll continue to do the best to, our best to facilitate collaborative and cooperative environment in support of our wonderful school district, so I look forward to another great year. 6.0 is appointment of officers without additional re- remuneration. 6.1 is the Clerk of the Board, Mrs. Sandra Janik. We do your oath individually, right? Thank you, and we're lucky again to have Mrs. Janik for another year. Now, Sandy, 6.2 through 6.6, those have already been administered their oath. Alright, so we have 6.2, the District Treasurer, Carol Peck. 6.3, Deputy Treasurer, Beth Albrecht. 6.4 is our Tax Collector. 6.5, Internal Claims Auditor, Ari Wembosi's. 6.6 is the Clerk of the Board, Pro Tempora, which is Lisa Fanara. And again, they've been administered their oath earlier. 7.0, the bonding limits. Could I have a motion to accept the bonding limits as they're written?
(inaudible).
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so moved. As we move through the different categories, we'll, I'll read off each of them if it would be alright, and then as a group, we'll approve or disapprove of each of them. 8.0 is designations. 8.1 is the establishment of dates of our regular meetings. Before we move any further, did anyone have any issues with any of the meeting dates, or would they like to suggest any changes?
(inaudible) probably out of town, and then also June 17th, probably going to a conference for work.
June 17th. So what I'm thinking is the August 6th, we could rearrange that one, but it would be kind of, yeah, it would be kind of short notice, well, we can't.
We can't because of tax.
Right, okay. And then, but June 17th, we may be able to do. That far out, I don't have anything that I'm committed to. Does anyone have anything that they're committed to that far out?
No.
So if that falls on a, that's a Monday?
(inaudible) out of town from Monday through Wednesday, maybe.
Monday through Wednesday. Sandy, do you have any suggestions, or?
The 24th is still, congratulations to 28th, correct. So you could do the 24th, or you could go the week before the 10th. I would think the 24th is probably closer to the end, because we have a lot of things to prepare.
Yeah, sure. So the 24th? Would everyone be okay with the following week, which is the, is it the following week? That Monday? Is everyone okay with that? Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay. We can make that adjustment. And then, so you'll be excused from the August 6th meeting, and then, as I, as I explained to you earlier today, if things come up and we have to miss a meeting, you know, please just let us know. We can fill you in, or, you know, those aren't major issues, as long as we don't go below four people in attendance. 8.2 is the approval of the 2019-20 budget calendar. 8.3 is the official bank depository and all the different funds and banks. 8.4 are official newspapers of the Lancaster Bee and the Depubee. And 8.5 is the official television station, Spectrum. 8.6, official radio stations, WBEN, WXRL, and WGR. Could I have a motion to accept those designations?
(inaudible).
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so moved. Okay. I'm gonna read the remain, 9.0 is authorization, so I'll read 9.1 through 9.10, and if you have any questions or comments about those, before we vote on them or turn the page, please speak up. So 9.1 is to authorize the designation of signature on all district clerk checks with signature plates, and that's Carol Peck and Beth Albrecht. 9.2 is to authorize the submission of bid notices as needed to local newspapers, and that's Jamie Phillips. 9.3 is to authorize the district clerk to open bids at the time and place advertising on behalf of the Board. In her absence, the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Support Services or her designated representative will perform this duty. 9.4, authorization to establish petty cash funds. 9.5, authorization of payment of bills in advance of Board approval upon approval of the warrant by the Internal Claims Audit. 9.6, to authorize the Chief School Administrator or his designee to approve attendance and payment of expenses of Board members and staff at meetings or conferences in advance of Board approval within the limits approved by the Board and the current budget and within provisions of existing Board policy. 9.7, authorize the prior approval of temporary cash advances from the General Fund to the Federal Aid Fund. Warrants for both the General Fund and the Federal Fund will list each advance, General Fund when it is given and Federal Fund when it is paid back. 9.8 is to authorize the participation in Bosi's cooperative bids. 9.9 is the authorization to accept donations of funds for the provision of field trip services and use of district buildings, and that's Mrs. Phillips. And then 9.10 is to authorize the use of credit cards by various school administrators and employees. Could I have a motion to accept those authorizations?
(inaudible).
Any questions or comments on those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so moved. Thank you. The remaining authorizations are 9.11, authorize the hourly rate for off-duty security officers at $29 an hour. That's $2 up from the previous two-year rate of 27 per hour. 9.12 is to authorize Jamie Phillips to certify the district's payroll. 9.13, authorize processing of all budget transfers on Chief School Officer's approval per the Policy 5.330. 9.14, authorize the Superintendent to apply for grants in aid, both state and federally. 9.15, authorize payment to non-Lancaster Central Teachers Association members who perform Schedule D and E duties at Schedule D and E rates per the current LCTA bargaining agreement. 9.16, authorize the Superintendent to approve contracts under $2,500. 9.17, authorize the Superintendent to approve bond issue change orders in amounts less than $35,000 prior to Board approval. And 9.18, authorize policy for free and reduced price meals and free milk. Could I have a motion to accept those authorizations?
(inaudible).
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so moved. 10.0 are other appointments. And if I could, I'll read through each of these before we ask questions or make comments and then vote. 10.1 is to appoint agents for the Board to oversee the investment of temporarily idle district funds, and that's Jamie Phillips and Carol Peck. 10.2 is to appoint the Deputy Treasurer of Extra Class Activity Accounts, and that's Beth Albrecht. 10.3, appoint the Purchasing Agent, Jamie Phillips. 10.4, this is to appoint the delegates. And 10.5 is to appoint Audit Committee members. So we'll have to stop at this time and go through each of those if we could. So the first that we have is the Delegate Assembly, and that's the policymaking body of the Association, of Erie County Association of School Boards. Last year, that was Mr. Jackson with Mrs. Metz as the alternate. So we have the Delegate Assembly, the Budget and Finance Team, and then the Legislative Team. Anyone care to partake in the, as the Delegate Assembly? Shannon Cohen? An alternate?
I'd stay alternate.
Okay, Mrs. Metz. The Budget and Finance Team? Last year, that was Mr. Gallagher with myself as the alternate.
I don't mind staying on there.
Okay, I don't mind.
Less.
You want back on the horse?
Mike has expressed him. Because he ran it for, he was on there for a few years.
Yes.
I don't mind staying on for another year, so.
Okay. You're not getting out of all the things that you got out of last year, though, so, just so you know.
Yeah.
Last year, it was just, I'm gonna get off of that committee. I mean, I'm gonna get off of that committee and that committee, but that does say that you were on quite a few committees, so.
Yes, yes.
We just miss you on those committees, that's all, Mr. Sage. Yeah. So that'll remain Mr. Gallagher with myself as the alternate. The Legislative Team, last year was Mrs. Christopher and Mrs. Dapczynski. Anyone care to?
(inaudible).
Okay, Mrs. Fetter. And we can have two. Yeah, we only need one. We can have two, or an alternate.
(inaudible).
Mrs. Cohen is the alternate, thank you. And then for NISBA, the New York State Association, or School Boards Association, the voting delegate last year was Mr. Jackson, and I know that you thoroughly enjoyed that. And the NISBA liaison was Mrs. Christopher. Anyone care to be the voting delegate at the convention?
No.
Okay, that's Mrs. Cohen. And would you like to be the alternate? Were you planning on going to the convention? Do you know if you're available in late October?
Yeah.
Would you like to be the alternate?
Okay.
Or, and then, would you also like to be the NISBA liaison? That's one meeting, I think, during the convention.
Okay.
That's a good way to learn about the Association. What? What are you laughing at?
It really is.
(inaudible).
I did it the first year. Yeah, and to be honest, you feel like you are making, yeah, you feel like you're impacting. You're sitting with other, sometimes new Board members, and you're impacting policy throughout the state and allowing the New York State School Board Association to select different topics that we want to advocate for. And it's a, it's a giant room, and you feel, I think, for the first time, part of something really big, you know, when you're involved in it. I know it seems, we laugh about it because it's typically the newest Board member, you know, gets, gets at.
Yeah, I did it.
You get it, but it's, when I sat there, I went to the one in Rochester, and it really feel like, you know, you're impacting change throughout, not just in our district, but throughout the state, and it feels, you're part of the legislative process, and it really lends itself for as, for as much as we joke about it. It's a room of hundreds of people where you're feeling like your voice is heard, and all of you collectively can make a huge difference in the state, so.
Right.
It really is nice, yeah, it is, it's awesome.
Right.
So, you'll enjoy it.
Thank you.
Yeah. And the NISBA Convention, the registration for the convention opens on Monday, July 16th, so if you're interested in attending, please give Mrs. Janik a phone call, or talk to her about payment info to book the hotel, because she'll have to use your credit card to book that, and then we go through the reimbursement afterwards, and she'll explain to you about the tax exempt status and the forms and things like that, so. Yeah, for all, it's in New York City this year, I mean, it's quite an informative and enjoyable couple-day event, so I encourage everyone to go. Of course, you're not obligated, I know many people cannot get off work or make arrangements, so, but the more, the merrier, of course. Okay, so continuing on with our district committees, we have the Audit Committee, which last year was Mrs. Dapczynski, Mr. Gallagher, and Mr. Jackson. Mr. Jackson, I know you spoke very highly of the Audit Committee and your time spent, thank you.
(inaudible).
Yeah. We'll send you a reminder, remind, yeah. Who else would like to be on the Audit Committee this year?
I would, I would, in an effort to save Miss Phillips' feelings, I would love to be part of it, but if anyone else wants to join in as well, it's, no.
I know that...
(inaudible).
Well, I know that, I'd be willing to go on to the Audit Committee as well. Let's just jump ahead for, before we do that, because one of you had mentioned you might be one interested in the Food Service Committee? Was that you, Jill, or Shannon? Okay.
(inaudible).
Okay. Do you have interest in either the Building Use or the Food Service, or?
I was really interested in the Health and Safety Committee.
Okay, okay. So I'd be willing to go on to the Audit Committee, and then someone else can take my place on the Food Service Committee. So that, I guess that would be Mr. Jackson, Mr. Gallagher, and myself for the Audit Committee. Food Service Committee, last year was myself and Mrs. Metz. Did you want to continue on that?
I would like to continue on that, yeah.
Okay, and then we'll add Mrs. Cohen to the Food Service Committee. And then the Building Use Committee, last year was Mrs. Metz and Mrs. Christopher.
I would like to be on the, yeah.
Nice. Good to hear from you, Mr. Sage. Anyone else care to be on the Building Use Committee?
I would stay on it.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Metz. Health Insurance Committee would be Mrs. Fetter.
Yeah, I, the Health Insurance and the Health and Safety Committee. (inaudible).
Oh, okay, okay. Can you do both of those? Can you do two? Okay. And...
She could take my spot on the Health Insurance.
If, or, unless both of you wanted to stay, so I wasn't trying to outbid you.
No, no, not at all, not at all. I find staying on the Health Insurance.
Okay, so it'd be Jill and Mike, Sage. And then the District-wide Health and Safety Committee would be Mrs. Fetter as well, with an alternate as Mr. Gallagher. Alternate?
Yeah, I'll go with that.
Okay.
Should we audit committee?
Yeah, we did audit committee. Any of those that we didn't get, Mrs. Janik? We're good. Okay, so thank you for volunteering for those. It's a, it's a big part of the representation and the engagement that the Board has with the governing bodies, the Erie County Association of School Boards, NISBA, and, but most importantly, the district as well. So you'll attend a couple of meetings, and we're happy to hear a report back on the findings or your observations of those meetings. But again, it's a very important, very important time spent, so we thank everyone for their commitment to those things. So that covers 10.4 and 10.5. And 10.6? Is that right, Mrs. Janik? And 7. Okay. 10.8 would be to appoint the School Physician, and that's Lancaster Depubediatrics. 10.9 is to appoint the Chief Dental Officer, that's Dr. Brennan Brennan. 10.10 is to appoint Acoustar for Employee Physicals. 10.11 to appoint members of the Committee on Special Education, the Committee on Preschool Special Education and Impartial Hearing Officers. 10.12 is to appoint the Fire Code Inspector, George Peace. 10.13, appoint Independent Auditor for the period beginning July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, that's Drescher and Malecki. 10.14 is to appoint the Risk Assessment Services of Freed and Maxick. 10.15, appoint the School Attorney, Harris Beach. 10.16, appoint Hodgkin Russ for ongoing tax surgeries and to provide continued bond counsel as needed. 10.17 is to appoint Benard and DeMarco as additional District Legal Counsel for tax surcery proceedings as needed. 10.18 is to appoint the Asbestos Designee, that's Nate Mason. 10.19, appoint Insurance Broker, Evans Agency Insurance. 10.20, appoint Records Management Officer, and that's Mrs. Phillips. 10.21 is to appoint the Appointing Officer for Civil Service Functions, that's Mrs. Phillips. 10.22 to appoint the Financial Advisor, that's Capital Markets Advisors, LLC. 10.23, or 10.23 is appoint Residency Hearing Officer, that's Dr. Valley. 10.24, appoint Title IX Officers, Michelle Ziegler, Andrew Kufel, Jamie Phillips, and Karen Marchioli. 10.25 to appoint the Census Numerator, that's Andrew Kufel. 10.26, appoint the School Resource Officers as our law enforcement unit. 10.27, appoint Supervisor of Attendance, that's Dr. Kufel. 10.28, appoint Records Access Officer, that's Mrs. Phillips. 10.29, appoint Liaison for Homeless Children and Youth, that's Mrs. Camerata. 10.30, appoint Chemical Hygiene Officer, that's Clifford Trapper and Stacy Lauk. 10.31, appoint Designated Educational Official to receive court notification regarding a student's sentence, adjudication in certain criminal cases and juvenile delinquency proceedings, that's Dr. Valley. 10.32, appoint School Passicide Representative, that's Nate Mason. 10.33, appoint Reviewing Official, Hearing Official, and Verification Official for the participation in federal child nutrition program. Reviewing Official, Tammy Ogliero. Hearing Official, Jamie Phillips. And Verification Official, Tammy Ogliero. Am I saying her name correctly?
Yes.
Nice. 10.34, appoint post issuance federal tax requirement compliance monitoring, that's Mrs. Phillips. 10.35, appoint the Board President and/or Vice President to appoint an impartial hearing officer per Board Policy 7670. And 10.36, appoint Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Pupil Personnel Services to make all residency determinations. Could I have a motion to accept all of those appointments?
(inaudible).
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? 11.0 are other items. 11.1 is to establish a conference, the conference reimbursement rates for meals at a maximum of $64 per day with receipts. 11.2 is the readoption of all policies and code of ethics in effect during our previous year. 11.3 is to establish mileage reimbursement rate, and that's according to the IRS-approved rate currently at .545 per mile. Could I have a motion to accept each of those rates and policies?
So.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.0, we have no presentations for this evening. 13.0, we'll move into regular session. 14.0, correspondence. We had, 14.1, we have an email from Jennifer Powell, received on June 9th, 2018. 14.2, an email from Lori Patzalides, received on June 24th, 2018. And 14.3, an email from Jessica Conlin, received on June 27th, 2018. Did anyone have any other correspondence they'd like to speak on? And correspondence would be, for future reference, anything that was addressed to the entire Board, and normally those things come through the district office. 15.0, approval of minutes. Could I have a motion to accept the regular session minutes from June 18th, 2018? Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 16.0, items from staff organizations, anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association?
First of all, we'd like to congratulate Jill Fetter and Shannon Cohen, the Governor of the Board. Congratulations. On the 22nd of September, we were able to lock down the date for a benefit for our former president at St. Mary's Lancaster High School from 5 until 9:00. So that now is our, tickets are available now, and we'll tell you after we have them, where you can talk to one of the other offices. We'd also like to thank Mr. Sage for volunteering for the, you know, he's already signed up on our online, volunteering, so, thank you very much.
So just to repeat, that's Saturday, September 22nd, from 5 to 9 at St. Mary's, and contact someone from the LCTA if they want tickets.
Easily, tell your, or maybe we'll give you a flyer.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? And anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? 17.0 is Board Reports. Anyone from the Board have anything that they'd like to report? Okay, very good. I, along with many others, was in attendance for graduation, which was, again, a... I, along with many others, was in attendance for graduation, which was, again, just a very well-run, efficiently-run, very energetic and expiring night for our graduates, and again, made our district look like the great district that it is. So I was very happy and proud to attend that event, along with my fellow board members. 18.0, old business?
Can I say something?
Oh, yes.
I just wanted to thank Dr. Valli, in particular. You showed up for our family in a big way at graduation, along with Mr. Marchioli, Mrs. Adamek, and everybody else who had any part of that. It was amazing. It was bittersweet, but at the same time, we were just really honored that you guys thought to include our son in it, and we'll be forever grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Metz. 18.0, old business. Anyone have any old business they'd like to discuss? 19.0 is new business. 19.1, personnel items. 19.1.1, to appoint our director of special, or of secondary education. And he's here tonight, Mr. Andrew Krazman. Congratulations, sir. Dr. Valli, would you like to say a couple things about our new?
Sure. Yeah, when Andy walked into the office, I told him that we had done our homework on him, and I felt like I already knew him. So there were quite a few excellent candidates. He rose to the top. He is formerly Assistant Superintendent of Louport, but he lives in Lancaster with his family and his, you know, kids, and, you know, wanted to come home here to Lancaster, and we're pleased to have him. Here's a synopsis of some of the comments and the references, and like I said, we did our homework. Great guy, develops relationships in a manner where he doesn't seek out power, all about the common good, doesn't mind taking a backseat for the mission and the vision of the district. If you get him, you hit the jackpot. As a building principal, I would call him every day to ask him for help and advice. Servant leadership is his mantra. Number one with teachers in Louport professional development process. Good with finance. He's extraordinary, extraordinarily visible. Humble guy, will fit in, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It goes on and on. He should be very proud of that, and we should be very, very proud to get him, because the last person said, "A good get," and I agree.
Thank you, Dr. Valli, and welcome again. Could I have a motion to accept that appointment?
So moved.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. And it's ironic, that sort of description follows you, because you're replacing a person of that, that same qualification and description. I'd like to congratulate you once again, Dr. Kufel, for your appointment. 19.1.2 are the personnel changes. Could I have a motion to accept the personnel changes?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 19.2, education items. 19.2.1, could I have a motion to accept the Committee on Special Educations report?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 19.2.2 is the Committee on Preschool Special Education Report. Could I have a motion to accept that? Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Okay. All right. So, before we move on, I forgot to ask about the workshop times, right? Okay, let's just get that, do that now. So, in one of our, when we were talking about the schedule for the Board of Education meetings, we have to set a time for workshop?
Work sessions.
Work sessions. So we have been at 6 o'clock, and I mentioned it last time, 6, 6:30, 7 o'clock. Does anyone have a preference? I would like to push it from 6 to perhaps 6:30. Or we could do even later at 7 o'clock. Is, does any other time preferable to anyone? Is 6:30 okay, or should we go to 7?
Yes. 6:30 plus. What's 6:30?
6:30? So, Mrs. Janik, if we could schedule those starting at 6:30. So 20.0 are business and financial items. 20.1, could I have a motion to accept the financial reports?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 20.2 is a second policy reading of 8240, instruction in certain areas. 20.3 is a second policy reading for 6212, certification and qualifications. 20.4 is a second policy reading for 7242, military recruiters and institutions of higher education, and how they access information on our students. 20.5 is the first policy reading for 7512, student physicals. And 20.6 is the first policy reading for 7131, education of homeless children and youth. And those are for information only, and will be voted on at a future meeting. Yeah, I did notice that as well. Should we go back to that?
Only if you care what I say.
Okay, so moving on. Yeah, we, no, we're good. Yeah, so we did skip over the superintendent's administrative report. So, Dr. Valli, let's plug you in there.
Yeah, I do want to take an opportunity, because it's an opportunity, to first say thank you to Mrs. Janik for the new board member reception. Mrs. Janik does about four billion things that go, are noticed, but are not recognized. So thank you again, Mrs. Janik, for putting that together. Second, I mentioned at graduation, but it's always good to say it a million times. I never get sick of hearing it. Mentioned at graduation, Lancaster High School class that sat before us that evening, had a 99% graduation rate. 56% of them walked the stage that evening with Regent's diplomas with advanced designation, which is the second highest in district history. 456 students, which is the highest in school district history, took over 400, excuse me, 847 advanced placement exams, also the highest in district history. And in the end, the community children did so well, the colleges and universities gave them $8.3 million in scholarships. Some other quick stats, you know, and these stats come in over the summer here. But physics, the percent of student scoring proficiency was 94% in physics, tied with an all-time high in the school district. Living environment, the amount of students at LMS taking living environment increased two years ago, about 70 students, making us number one or number two in Western New York with regard to, in, with the, with regard to the number of students who are advanced in science at the middle school. In addition to that, the middle school students and teachers, and trust me, it's about teachers, they maintained 100% proficiency during that time for the second straight year with those increased numbers, and have also increased the number of students, the percentage of students with mastery by 14%. Now, that's an increase of 14%. So again, not one student has ever failed over there, being advanced with science at living environment, which is a freshman course, Regent's course, just a real kudos to them. Everyone knows, hopefully, that we are starting an alternative program for the first time here in the school district this September. Building a district administration in collaboration with counselors and a team of teachers, led by Mike Candela, have been working diligently this summer, the last two weeks, to get the new alternative, alternative program up and running. They've had students interested and committed to the program, and now they're working out the logistics and building the schedules and doing those kind of things. So more to come on that in the coming weeks and months. Just some words on CDOs. The district made a considerable step in evaluating students' progress towards CDOs commencement. That was started by Mr. Armstrong, Mrs. Camerata, and Michael Candela. And just some stats here. 2015, 16, students who received the credential was zero, because the program didn't exist. 2016, 17, we had 26 students, or 37% of the special ed cohort. 2017, 18, 39 students, 53% of the cohort. And the initial projections here in 18, 19, 55 students are taking it, which would be 76% of the cohort. So congratulations to all those teachers involved and all those administrators in that whole program, which is a collaboration with Clarence and been extremely successful over those years. Now with another successful year under our belts, we're now preparing for another, you know, great year, 2018, 2019. The board had its meeting last, last meeting was in the bus garage, brand-new bus garage, and that was fantastic, and we got a tour, and it was nice to get over there. All the buses have moved over, and people are being acclimated. At the end of the summer, the rest of the staff will move over into that new facility. But also, we're finishing up the new Java gym, and that old bus parking lot will now become a new student/faculty parking lot and provide students with access to the high school from that lot, solving our probably 40-plus years of student parking issues. Additionally, that parking lot will gain access to the fields, the football fields, and our athletic facilities in really meaningful and exciting ways, as well as, you know, really provide a real nice facade for the football field and the athletic facilities, and the opportunity for gathering and having fun before those events. So thank you to Jamie Phillips and Buffalo Construction, and Young &amp; Right, and all those people who are working diligently this summer to get those things completed. The new gym, it's gonna be nice. It's gonna be beautiful. And finally, the SES focus group met on June, Saturday, June 16th, and culminated with some results and comments posted by all the people who were involved, some 40-plus people. I have, in the process of sending a personal thank you note to each one of those individuals, but here formally and in public, I'd like to say thank you for spending a Saturday, for, you know, coming out and talking about our students and the future of our school district. And we're now in the next phase, and that next phase is the Board of Education and its August 6th meeting. We'll go and discuss this with the Young &amp; Right, their architectural firm, basically taking the pie in the sky ideas of what could be done, which are all doable, and then saying, okay, now that they're doable, what are the costs? What's the timeline? And those nitty-gritty mortar and construction and brick and mortar kind of questions. That'll happen August 6th with Young &amp; Right and the Board of Education, and then we'll move on to the next phase, which is decision-making. So that's where we stand. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Valli. Moving on with the business and financial items. 20.7 and 20.8 are both contracts with the Lancaster Junior Redskins for facility use and storage agreement. Could I have a motion to accept those agreements?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 20.9 is a contract with Playworks. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 20.10, 11, and 12 are contracts with Aspire for the summer, for the summer and 2018, 19, and for 17, 18. Could I have a motion to accept those contracts?
So moved.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 20.13 is the food service monthly report for May 2017. Could I have a motion to accept that report?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 20.14 and 20.15 are surplus equipment and textbooks. Could I have a motion to accept those reports?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 20.16, could I have a motion to accept the contract with Auctions International Incorporated?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 20.17, could I have a motion to accept the auction results?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 20.18 is a bid award for transportation parts and supplies. Could I have a motion to accept that award?
So moved.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 20.19 is the 2018-19 school lunch prices. Could I have a motion to accept the prices?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 20.20 is an AIA contract with ARRIC, Eric. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 2021 is a contract with Sienna Environmental Technologies. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 20.22 is a contract with New York Cooperative Liquid Asset Security Systems. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 2023 is a contract with Clinical and Forensic Psychology Services. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 2024 is a contract with Western New York Physical and Occupational Therapy Group. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 2025 is a contract with Sound Transformations Music Therapy Services. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 2026 is a contract with Sport Rehab Physical Therapy. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 21.0 is public hearing. Welcome to all who have come to observe this meeting this evening. This is a time set aside for public hearing, a time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person is given up to five minutes in which to address the board.